Okay, we'll have to call the meeting to order to concur all please.
Jeff Martin.
Here.
Len Dresky.
Here.
Tom Hack.
Here.
Lloyd Niskies.
Here.
Jack Houd.
Here.
Rice for the pledge please.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, we are going to go ahead to the work session today. Dr. Taylor, if you want to...
Yeah, so we, at our last board meeting, we spoke about needing to discuss the face mask policy at Riverside and have further discussion about what that might look like till the end of this year and more specifically the start of next year. We have Ron Graham, Lake County General Health District Commissioner here as well, that he might be able to answer some questions aboard my day. So it's just general discussion at this point. I don't know when the board members would like to start discussing the policy. I can give you a refresher. In August, we received a, an order from the O D H where everyone had to wear masks and that's what we did. We put it in our policy. And although some things have changed throughout the year, that order, from what I understand, is still in place. And at this point, we have 22 days left. I'm not so sure if it's worth not, you know, requiring them. We have relieved our students of the shields. We had those as well. Students are now able to go into recess without masks outside. They're also allowed not to have shields or masks during lunchtime, but we still have them in classroom. Reason for that is there's a lot more space outside. There's more circulation outside. In cafeteria, there's more space outside as well, or in cafeteria. In classrooms are relatively small considering we have 25 kids in a classroom. We still want to protect not only the families of the kids, but also our staff as well. And that's where we are with it. I've received not really many calls or emails about the masks. Early on, we had a few people that were concerned about them. I have to say that inasmuch as I received input and suggestions from parents, sometimes I agree with some of the things that they were saying, some that I don't, but it really, to me, doesn't hold a heck of a lot of water when I have to make decisions based upon what I think is best for the kids. And that determination has to come from some type of authority, not necessarily a parent. Like I said, the mother I agree or disagree. What I've done is recommended policy based upon what I'm hearing from the Ohio Department of Health and also our local health district as well. They have been very responsive and very helpful during this time. Also had a meeting on Thursday with my counterparts in Lake County and also Geogee County with superintendents. There's not a lot of decisions that are made yet for next year, and it didn't appear that any other school district was going to relieve their students of the mask mandate until the end of the year. Like I said, we have 22 days left.
Great. All right, so Mr. Hack, do you want to talk about what you put up first? Or do you want, and then we have asked Mr. Graham to be here, and do you want to start with him? How would you like to proceed?
Why don't we, why don't we go ahead and, and I'll even start with this, just to set the stage.
Sure.
And then, and then we will ask Mr. Graham for his perspective as well, obviously. So as I look at where we are, I'm trying to figure out what's going on for, you know, potentially this year, but really probably for next year, I think we have to look at two questions and find out a thread, thread those two questions. The first question is fundamentally have masks in school had an overall positive impact on student learning. The other question is, can we ever get to zero risk regarding the coronavirus? And I think most people are going to answer no to both those questions, right? So we're never, we're never, the masks were detrimental, I think, I think we'd all agree with that. And, and we're never going to get to zero risk. So we've got to figure out how to thread that needle so that, that we, we allow education to proceed in Riverside in a, in a straightforward and positive manner and, and take care of people along the way. Obviously, we have, we have staff and things like that we need to, to work with. But, but if we are able to thread that needle, we're going to be in a situation where, where we have mitigated things to the maximum extent possible. So one of the things I wanted to point out further in this is, you know, what really are the impacts of the coronavirus to those who are school age? And the stats I pulled out, I don't know how well you can, you can see them, but when it comes to hospitalizations, Lake County's had 772 as of May, excuse me, April 16th. We had 27 residents or citizens who were 0 to 19 as part of that 772. So it's a very low percentage. When you look at the average age of the, the hospitalizations, they're 65 years old. When you ask the question, how many of them had pre-existing conditions? The answer is 49%. The, the next category, so we have hospitalizations and then we have ICU admissions. We've had 99 total cumulative ICU admissions in, in Lake County. I don't have the stats for whether or not any of them were, were from school age from 0 to 19. And then the next category, I think that is most, has the most solid data is the question of how many deaths were, occurred. And so total deaths reported from COVID cumulative in Lake County, 380. None of them were from, from school age children. The average age of, of cases who died from COVID is 79. The percent of them who had pre-existing conditions is 47. And then the average age for cumulative cases is 44. So what I'm trying to drive home is that when you look at the effects of the coronavirus on school age populations, it's, it's not nothing, but it's, it's very low. And so, in my opinion, much of what has happened frankly is, is, has been, has not necessarily been faced on, based on the silence, science, but based on overwrought concern, which has frankly developed into fear in some cases. And so I wanted to establish that, that these students are, are not a prime, they're, they're not a prime target, if you will, of the, of the virus. So, so I think that's an important thing to, to establish. There are other things, there are a whole lot of other data, but to me, this data is, is the most important and what we need to focus on as we consider potentially going forward. The other, the other thing that comes up, and I, bring up that other file. So the other question that comes up is... It's, it's terrific that, that we can point out that, that the impact of the coronavirus overall is, is, is fairly minimal with the school age children. But, but the other question is, what happens in the dynamic of the, the virus between the, the students and the teachers? And so what I'm showing up on the, on the board, on the projector, is a study of three studies, basically. It's a review of three studies by the University of Minnesota. And the three studies are North Carolina, Sweden, and Norway. And, and in summary, all of them showed that there is the minimus transfer of the virus from, from students to teachers and from teachers to students. I, to, to be clear, the, the both, actually, to be clear, the, the study that was in North Carolina, North Carolina did have the protocols in place, right? So they had, they were social distanced, they were masked. The Norway study does not say whether they, not they were masked. They just talk about the results of, of whether or not the coronavirus was transferred from, from students. And then the Sweden study, there were no masks involved. So, so when you look at this in total, there's, there's good evidence that, that it's, it's not nothing, but it is, it is a, a low-risk environment. And so what I'm hoping to establish here and then have some, some dialogue about, and then we can maybe ask Mr. Graham to join the conversation as well and get his perspective on, on how he sees things developing, is it's, it's relatively low risk to, to students. We have, we have data that shows that it is limited risk to teachers. And, and I think that, that what we definitively know is that when we talk about all of the things that have occurred, the, the shutdowns, the lockdowns, the lack of school, the, the wearing of the mask, the, where we are with, with going into summer school, having to, to play catch-up with many students, this, this was devastating, right? So we never, so in the conversation that we have about safety, which is important, we never talk about the costs of what is happening with the students and their learning. So, so there is a, certainly we are right to be protective of everybody involved, but by the same token, we have an obligation, in my view, to, to thread that needle so that, that students are able to, to thrive and to learn. And, and we have short-term issues, there's no doubt, but we're going to have to learn. Are we, are we, I mean, are we going to wear the mask forever? Are we going to wear the mask forever? I say we don't. We need to figure out how to live with the coronavirus. And, and we need to, you know, I think a lot of it is fear. We have used, fear has led us to do things that have been detrimental, in my opinion, to all the school age children and maybe beyond that for last year and this year. We, their, their existence, their, their experience, their ability to learn has been diminished because of our reaction. We also want to bring in play the fact that, that things have changed since we first put these things in place. We, we understand better the coronavirus. A lot of the data that we didn't have, now we have that data. Further, we also have vaccines that are in place. So those who want the vaccine, we, we now have reduced risk. So I would make the case that, that we're never going to get to zero risk. We know that the mask is detrimental to education. We've got to figure out how to thread that needle to, to mitigate the risk as much as possible, but, but to, to allow for effective learning in, in our classrooms. So that is what I wanted to say. I, so please, and...
So I, I, just for the sake of time, I just want to let everybody know I need to leave at 6:15 because I have a work meeting at 6:30. I'm sorry, 6:30, because I have a, I have a work meeting at 6:45. And so in that light, I would like to give Mr. Graham an opportunity to, to give us some information on his perspective. I also want to say that, you know, I understand that, you know, you have requested that we have this meeting and studies are studies and there's data on all kinds of, you know, different aspects. And so I, I just want to say that thanks for the data, but I think from my perspective, we could pull data on all sides of the story. So I kind of would like to give Mr. Graham the opportunity to say what he has to say so that I can hear what he's going to say before I have to...
Thank you very much. Appreciate the opportunity to come out tonight. And this is really something that was just driven by Mr. Hack, but also by the Health District. Much like you guys, we have to plan our 2022 budget way back in December 2020. You have to kind of get the crystal ball off and see what you can do. And so we're certainly there with this, with health as well. I was superintendent with Jim and the group, meeting weekly for the last, what, 12 months, I think. You get to know everybody pretty well and become close. So what we wanted to do is try to give some guidance to the general public with the Board of Health making a statement based on the signs that we had. And unfortunately, some of the data and signs we do not have, which lends a little bit more to where Tom is headed. We wanted to be able to help make sure we weren't buying unnecessary goods that could go back to teacher salaries or to class field trips. We want to make sure that, we're making sure that there's the best learning environment. The Board of Health does believe face-to-face learning is the best. There's certainly concerns, I think, across the board that 10%, 20%, 30%, you know, whatever that percentage may be, if people learn, children learning behind the computer, interacting with it, with a mask on, has not only health implications, but certainly unknown mental health implications. And so what we're trying to do is collect all that data from, from, from tangible data. That's the easy part. The part we don't know is how much of an impact this has to students' confidence, how the strain of parents. Suicides are up, not in this category. Domestic violence is up, divorce rates are up. All those other factors we know either because of the economic impact, that the fear of the virus or impacts these children. So trying to do our best to kind of get that crystal ball out and go with it. An important factor is vaccination, at least for Lake County. 60 and above are nearing 80% vaccination rates, 65 and above. So a lot of the discussion, I try, I try to keep it in perspective, is that we wanted to stop this wave. We wanted to stop over surge or overrun of the hospitals. We wanted to preserve our ventilators. We wanted to prepare and make sure we eliminated any deaths that we could. So we know that it impacted the overpopulation. Tom's numbers are correct. If it's coming into the schools, it's coming into the schools through some contact that's mostly like outside of the classroom. Early on, we didn't find community spread. Contact tracing became ineffective when parents would not tell us what party they went to, what friends they were with. We were probably pioneered in taking those resources and reallocating them to vaccination versus contact tracing. Because at that time, it was no benefit to anybody. We weren't getting the information. You know, mother, father would call their friends and say, hey, look, we were positive. And we weren't getting that data. So we had to adjust in this unprecedented event. What we want to try to do again is to see what impact is going on, how many kids' grades are slipping, is truancy up, is absenteeism up. Everybody, I think, trial by fire, learned about how challenging, you know, video conferences can be. The technology alone, used to be the big joke, Ohio Department of Health could never get a conference call right. We never understood why. But when you try it, you really see that there's always some problem. The more people in that meeting, the more background and feedback you get. They forget that they're on camera. I don't believe that that's the best learning environment for children. So really happy to come out here and talk to you guys, answer your questions that you want. But on the data side, again, it's not impacting the students, certainly not the younger ones. Athletics is going on and there's so many different interpretations that the state has, sector by sector. I really do cringe. You know, you have the MFL draft, nobody's wearing masks. You know, for a while weddings and funerals were held heartless for, for many at that time, while they were wearing masks in wrestle, but you can't shake hands. So somewhere where there are things we would like to be, and as way things really are. And again, we're trying to close that gap on, you know, the cost containment. I know you guys have teacher unions and all those human resources. And vaccine is effective, 9 to 95%. There could not be guarantees. Parents have to make a decision. And we just want to make sure we try to give the best advice, guidance, anticipation of vaccine. Sooner it'll be 12 to 15 being vaccinated. Herd immunity is somewhere between 70 and 85%. Nobody wants to put a number on that. We roughly been using 75% is pretty darn good. The problem is if we don't get our children vaccinated, it means 100% of everybody else above the age of 16 has to get vaccinated to get into herd immunity because of those numbers. It's, it's almost impossible. So really what I have to discuss is, is these masks, so many non-tangible things right now. Do, you know, getting, falling behind in reading scores for a year, do they ever catch up? Falling behind on math, you know, breaking up a family, all those kinds of soft things are very, very hard to quantify, but I think they're real. And so we're just trying to find, again, how can we get some information to you quickly by the end of the month, some guidance from the Health District to make you feel better. We all have prosecutors and attorneys that weigh in on this, recommendations are recommendations, not mandates. Senate Bill 22 changes that even more. So again, I think the discussion is important and you got to find the middle ground. It may not be the same for everybody. I'm just here today to help walk through that discussion if we can. Tom, did I miss anything?
No, I think that you've covered it pretty well. So I know that you are in, you know, the public lots and you've talked to people. Have you received any feedback or perspective from, from parents or others? I know, obviously, you've talked a lot with the, the superintendents and what have you, but if you talk to the general population, you got a sense of what's, what's going on there?
Yes, it's certainly, it's just a recent personal focus group together. And the beginning of this was always about the masking and the mask usage. About a year into it, it's already become about getting rid of the mask for the most, most complaints that we have for various reasons. Allergy season, medical conditions, businesses. We have a young child that's four years old, broke down just because they couldn't use the library to get a book because they'd have a mask on. So we should guide us on that. So really, the shift has been, I think, away from the fear of the mask, but now the shift to, I think it caused more problems in my family with my child than it, than it's, than it's solving. As we see the case rate kind of go up and down, we know it's going to be here for a while. Chica Dunya's here, West Now Virus is here, there's many, many things. And so I think the population we try to protect, which was really grandma and grandpa and those extended families, they're now vaccinated, at least 70% in climbing of those individuals. I do agree that, you know, maybe in the May is too soon to drop everything, but I think we need to have a good plan for the fall. We can always change it if we need to, based on the data. Again, that's the easy part, the outbreaks, the transmissions, we know that very, very well. Again, we just need to probably help you make a decision and what you guys are able to do with local control. The state's behind on guidance for senior centers. They're behind on some of the other guidance for, for busing is often not, not addressed, just left off the hook. So we've exercised a lot of local authority and local judgment. And I think we need to continue to do that. But you guys certainly have an obligation and interested in doing the same thing. And it may not always align with what we have there to help the search. So I'm just happy to answer any questions. Jim, I know, again, anything you want to talk about, I mean, appropriate for you to weigh in?
Maybe we've been on the same terms from day one, working, working in the summer, trying to balance between, you know, safety protocols and trying to give the students some sense of normalcy. Very difficult this year, as you know. Nothing that I've heard yet so far disagree with, you know, in terms of how difficult it is to try to educate kids under these types of circumstances. And I'm not just talking about masks, I'm talking about everything that's involved with the COVID. You know, the board knows, and I don't know if the community knows, that I fought with help to make sure that we had sports this year. There was a good, there was a good chance of, of not having fall sports. The W R C was split and I fought tooth and nail to make sure that we're at least giving the students the opportunity. I mean, we have to at least try. And, you know, if things don't work out, then you change course. So we're able to get through the, the sports. We were able now to have a few concerts. We just had prom this past Saturday. We did get rid of some of the extra protocols that we had in place, like I said, with the shields. I know those weren't popular at all. Aside from having any issues about distance, again, I don't intend to bring those back unless I'm forced to. Doesn't work out all that well. Kids are starting to move from class to class at the elementary level, which they weren't able to do before. They were, you know, I don't want to say isolated, but they were in the classrooms a long time throughout the day. So we're trying right now, like I said, you know, what we have in place really is the mask. That's what we have, masks on in, in classrooms and masks on in, on buses.
So if I could just, I know that Mrs. Grassley's leaving shortly. This is a clarification. All the data on this page is from the Lake County Health District. I just want to make sure that was clear. Thank you.
Gotcha.
So did I just hear you say that, that kids in the elementary classrooms are moving around to different classrooms if they're, if they have...
Art, music.
Not, oh, just that. Not like if a child is being prepped in, say, second grade reading and is a first grader. Is that child going to that second grade room?
I, I'm not exactly sure if every single school is doing the exact same thing because of space issues. The newer class, or the newer buildings were able to do it because we do have designated places for art, for music. And it's a little bit more difficult at Melbridge and at Buck Ag. But we're trying the best we can to try to get back to normal. We'll get to moving from classroom to classroom. Again, recess, they had masks on for the longest time. They don't anymore. And also, they were eating in their classrooms and now we're getting them into the cafeterias to be able to eat, spread them out a little bit. So again, trying to get back to that normalcy. This isn't anything any of us want. I mean, I don't like the masks either, just like anybody else. It's one of those things where, again, at the beginning of the school year, we're trying to put the protocols in place to try to protect the kids in, in something, you know, that we're not 100% sure about. We, we have 22 days left. And like I said, although I think we ought to make decisions based upon what's, you know, you know, best as a whole, I think with the idea of removing the mask with just those many days left, it would probably be a mistake. And the only reason I say that is because in the beginning of the year, we put out our, our, our plan for the kids to come back. And we listed all the protocols. A lot of parents made those decisions based upon what we had in that, in that handbook. And the handbook said that the kids were required to have masks. And they also, we also had death shields, but we just removed those.
Do, do we anticipate making updates to that plan over the summer in cooperation with the Health Department? I'm assuming that like we'll have some time to be able to do that over the summer.
We will. But I mean, it's, it's, you know how much the target has moved throughout? I just, I mean, we're, we're sitting here now in early May. I don't think we can make any decisions based upon what it's going to look like in September, you know, or late August. To me, it's almost like you want the least restrictive environment. And that would mean looking at all that, that's out there in terms of, you know, what the, what the virus looks like. We're gonna, and this is one thing I wanted to mention to the board as well, is along with other school districts in Lake County, we're looking to provide at least the, the space here for Riverside parents who want their student to get vaccinated, they have to be 16, 17 years old. And we're looking at possibly Thursday, the 13th, to have. And we had 153 parents respond that they'd want their kids to have the vaccine. Now, we have to reach out to those saying to make sure that they're still interested. And we have to get forms out to them to make sure. But I just want to make sure the board understands, because I did mention this at our last board meeting, that just like many other school districts, we're going to provide that opportunity for the parents that want their children vaccinated, 16 and 17-year-olds.
So if I could jump in, I, so I know from a, from being on the board through this whole period of time, that we have gone through a lot of trials and tribulations. And I, I do want to commend the administration and, and teachers and, and other staff for, for jumping through a lot of hoops. Teacher Appreciation Day was, you know, last week. And, and, and we all, I think, left a message. And we're sincere in all of the comments, because this, this has been a very challenging year. There's no two ways about it. And so I want to make that, that point.
It's, and the thing is, it's, it's just time and organization trying to get our ducks in a row here in order to, you know, to start the school year. But be perfectly honest with you, it couldn't have been this smooth without our staff cooperating and also our parents. I have to tell you that, think about it, you're going to school, you got the mask on, you got the shields on, you have all these new rules, you, you, you know, there's the idea that there might not be activities and everything else. Last year, we didn't have grad, a real graduation. We didn't have prom. All these things that are very traditional to the, to the, especially the seniors, it went all out the window. This year, I have to tell you, with the, with starting the school year, we had a couple of calls. And parents, there were some parents that weren't happy with some of the protocols. But everybody followed the directives. Wasn't the best situation, but they did. And that's the reason why we had a successful year so far. It's not because of really what, how we put things together. I mean, that was, I guess, the easier part. It's the cooperation from our staff and also our, our kids and our parents. I mean, this could have been a mess. And it wasn't.
No. And, and, and you're, you're spot on with all, all those comments. And I think everybody on the board would, would agree with all of them. The one observation I would make is, we have made the best that we possibly could out of bad circumstances, circumstances. But it was not without impact, right? We, we are an educational institution. And, and I think we need to talk a little bit about some of the experiences we may have with the people who have been depressed and, and had other negative reactions to what's going on. I, I, so I, I would say that, that we did not achieve our goals. And, and making the best out of a bad situation is important. And everybody played a positive role in making that happen. But, but to allow people to achieve the most and get the most out of their experience at Riverside and the classes and everything else, I, we fell short. And and it's not our fault, we did everything we possibly possibly could, but going forward, we need to be in a situation where where we allow the full capabilities of students to learn and teachers to interact that that we can't and I and 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 frankly, the the mask is a detriment. It's we don't, we talk about, it's it is, it is absolutely admirable how everybody jumped through hoops and did a lot of things to make this year work as good as possible, but but it wasn't, it it didn't make it equivalent to to what we can do in a in a regular school environment. And that's what I think we need to to get back to, we're eighteen, almost eighteen months into this. And and if we're going to get back to normal, that is, it's what we have mitigated, I mean, we've done a lot of things. So so there there are new capabilities, the vaccine is there. Um, so people are protected, we understand the coronavirus better and looking forward to the fall. I think that that we need to step off in as normal a footstep as possible.
Well, I think that was a lot of the point of the meeting tonight, right, so not not so much being rid of masks with twenty-two days left, I think that's that's not realistic. I mean, we're, we need to finish the school year the way we started it, get through the school year. But I I did have a question for Mr. Graham, when you made the comment regarding um if there was a lot of data on mental health with the under in school age kids, because I can tell you, I've got three children in the district, two at the high school, one at the middle school. And one of my children in the last week has had two friends who have one vocalized her desire to commit suicide, another one that tried to over the weekend. Um, it is an extremely serious, like the pandemic has caused a major epidemic among the teenagers. I have never in my life seen kids as literally mentally distraught as they are right now. And I I do think a lot of it, in agreement with Mr. Hack, has to do with the masks, and not to blame Riverside or anything else, but I mean, these kids do not know how to live like this, this is not normal, it's not, nothing about this is okay for them. Um, I don't know if they know that it's because, I don't know if they know why they feel the way they feel, but they, it's terrifying what is happening with teenagers in particular right now, so um I'm just really curious if we have any doubt on that, because I mean, I I'm seeing it in my own household from kids that we care about that are struggling to live quite honestly right now.
Yeah, usually they have all the drug, all the services, board carries that data, uh they carry out the providers, whatever fifteen or so providers plus in Lake County. Uh, certainly Crossroads, previously Crossroads has the most data, and so that's under listed to circle back on those because it's very hard to find it. We know any additional stressor is is what it is, it's an additional stressor. Uh, but to quantify that is becoming very hard and you don't want it to be post-suicide when you start to look hard enough, so. That that's probably our number one concern is that, you know, people maybe perhaps lost scholarships, uh lost disinterests in sports. Uh, you know, and how does that impact education and how does it impact income, which is very downstream? But, you know, education and income are one of the primary drivers, if not the primary driver in in good health of your community. And can we afford to lose six months, twelve months, eighteen months? And there's no right answer, I mean, with the virus, you just just no right answer, but we gotta do the best and we can always monitor outbreaks, what's harder to monitor is the mental health situation of children, because it could stay hidden very, very long until it's it's too late or or detrimental, so it's just interesting collateral damage and and we gotta have those conversations like we do today and see what we do is best for everybody.
So I guess that was really, I think that a lot of the point of this meeting tonight was how we, we don't want to start planning for next school year in August, but having the conversations now about how we get our kids back to the most normal learning environment, whether means if they're sitting at a desk and not moving, can they have a mask off, but in the hallway they need to have it on just to protect because we're as we know, when you walk through the hallways, it's close quarters and things like that, but how we get ourselves to that point so that the kids can be learning at the very least without a mask on, because if we can't offer the virtual academy in the same way we did this year, and it's not going to look like that, so the kids are going to have no choice but to be in school, short of them enrolling out of district and a, you know.
That's why we had the dust shields originally, because we couldn't guarantee that the students were going to be six feet apart. Uh, but it was also to allow the students to have mask breaks. And then we found that after, yeah, but after the course of of months, the the shields just didn't hold up very well either.
But even that, they weren't even really getting us for exactly.
It depends, I guess, what what classroom you are in though, to.
Sure.
You know, some were a little bit more apt to give than the.
Without doubt, and the weather was nice, they were doing a lot more, you drive through and see them out on campus and things like that.
There's gonna be a few things that may be different too, I mean, everyone knows the importance of having the kids in school and not um learning remotely. You know, they're accelerating circumstance, I can understand that, but generally speaking, kids are going to learn more in in class, in school. Had the socialization as well, and right now, it's my understanding that we cannot offer the same type of program that we, uh next year that we offered this year. So we're gonna have to rethink a few things, kids are going to be back into the buildings.
Yeah, I think there's no doubt and and, you know, the parents that chose to put their parents in the remote uh learning as opposed to in in person. Not all of them were strictly because they didn't want to have their child necessarily exposed to the coronavirus, they didn't want them wearing a mask as well. So there were, there's more than one population that would that decided to.
That that represented twenty-seven percent of our enrollment in our district as well. And if you compare it to other Lake County schools, it was about the same, I know City had more, their 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 percent was a little bit higher. Uh, but it was around uh twenty-five to to twenty-eight percent from what I remember um throughout the county. I think we ended up at twenty-seven or twenty-eight percent, that's the first semester.
Yeah, I would just add, there's one more thing, because I'm sure you guys understand this, so we introduced a lot of variables all at once, the mask, hand washing. Sanitizing our rooms differently, not going out to restaurants, and that happened for like twelve months. Which one had the biggest, you know, they're all beneficial, which is the biggest percentage, which one can you let go of? Uh, for whatever reason, if it's allergies or contact allergies to excessive cleaning supplies and cleaning uh protocols, which are kind of really being tamped down, so that's not a really big contributor, you know, it's some, but not the big picture. So we're gonna have to start making kind of compromises to get back to the the world. And so it is some of this is a step in the dark, but again, which one has the the worst repercussions, which of the solutions cause more damage or not? Otherwise, you're all in for everything, and if you're all in for everything, you're all in forever. And and I guess that's what, as a society, as a community, that's kind of what we're facing, is it's unprecedented, I'm fearful it could turn into permanence. And and how how do we navigate that, again, we don't have the answers yet, uh but again, these discussions are important and we have to, I think, give hope to the community. If not, we're gonna be looking at more and more depression, more and more uh mental health issues and and God forbid suicides. So I really, you know, get a lot of criticism that I try to understand the business side, try to understand the the public health side and then some of these logistics and I'm not crit- criticized for that for being a little different than many of the health commissioners. But we've we've did very, very well, like Lake County, we're leading the way in vaccination rates, you know, six, seven percent above the state. Uh, it could equalize differently, but we are being very, very effective and again, it's, we've been meeting with fire chiefs, managers and managers of schools every week for for over a year now. Uh, and it's been hugely, I think, that one of the the key points in Lake County is we're willing to to look at the data, challenge everybody, uh challenge ourselves and and really come up with the best plan for Lake County, and I think this is just one of those pieces that we gotta get through uh sector by sector, board by board.
Is there any, you know, I was reading even uh quarantining now, now that everyone, a lot of people are getting the vaccination, that now students aren't, athletes aren't getting, uh don't have to quarantine automatically like they did before. You know, it shut down a lot of different sports programs uh in the in the winter. Um, and I think the change has come because of the the vaccination, right?
Correct.
So, I mean, is there any discussion revolving around vaccination and whether or not someone might have to wear, might be able to wear a mask or not wear a mask in the fall with students at all?
Not that far again, just the current guidance in the C D C issue too, that kind of diagrams, which felt somewhat fair follow up, it's already one of the graph, it's already an orange again. We went through that with with the governor's system and, I'm sorry, so C D C came out with kind of those two charts looking at mass usage and and one of them's like yellow and and orange still where you just, you're never safe, it feels like. And if you're vaccinated, you're safe all the time, except if you're, you know, in a closed area. So I think that's gonna be misleading to the public, uh but really nothing about fall, they're still kind of like in the now. And again, some of the data, we we requested that be seven indicators that we have currently for the the alert system, there was supposed to be ten. They never got to ten, uh I've advocated for the last about month and a half that our vaccination rate needs to weigh in as one of the eight, as the minimum, the eighth indicator that has not been addressed by the Health Department of Health. And uh and again, so we're trying to do as much as we can locally to educate, uh walk through those discussions and see, but which you will find out, I guarantee, like every time there's more groups that are vaccinated, twelve to fifteen, they're going to make a change by the state just as we we should as those come through, those those percentages increase.
Well, I guess some of it's interesting too, I, Mrs. Ford and I were talking about this the other day when we were on the phone, just about some of the things that I think that we I realized that I, you know, we talked about was was hand washing, one of the things, right, that and the hand sanitizer and things like that, that I'd like to see us make sure we move forward with forever, right, I mean, she and I were talking about it, I'm like, Mike, there has to be something to be said for these kids actually really washing their hands, using sanitizer, things like that, I mean, my daughter comes out of her competitive cheer gym, she holds people up in her hands and their feet, and in the past, how the hell did I let her eat food after having someone's hands in her feet in her hands, right? And now I'm like, you know, I mean, so some of these things really will, I hope, continue to make a positive impact. I mean, we had, you know, we always had the flu and things like that, so there are things that we certainly should absolutely keep in place moving forward, you know, we, these kids always should be washing their hands for Christ's sake, and they should be using hand sanitizer and things like that that we probably weren't doing enough. So maybe it made us realize some more of what we should be doing, you know, I don't think we can ever get to the point where we can get rid of everything, I think it's important that we have things like that, but I do believe that we need to try to find a way to get it so that our students can be in a learning environment that doesn't include a mask on their face while they're in a classroom, for sure.
So wait, I haven't heard, we haven't heard much from uh Mr. Miley or Mrs. Graus in D C.
I I agree, I mean, I have a son that plays sports, so he's out on the field all the time with the boys um with no mask and, you know, to the same point make sure you wash your hands when you're done and um things like that, I also have my kids tell me, though, they don't mind wearing a mask, so you you know, it's kind of back and forth, and I think we have to take that into consideration for the, that we represent the entire district, just not, you know, our families. But there's always an option as we move forward, if you still want to wear a mask, I think that's absolutely an option, so. I do agree that we need to get back to a place where we can see each other's faces and each other's smiles and um, you know, I still work from home right now, so it's amazing, just even those Zoom calls, as much as I hate them, when we're on camera, um, the other day somebody said something, they could tell by the look on my face, right, that I was like, really, what's the question, right, and I know that has to be difficult for our teachers, right, like you see their eyes, but are they really bringing in or learning or understanding what you're saying to them, so you can't see that now, but I'm absolutely in agreement that we need to figure out how to move forward.
Mr. Miley, any any comments or observations?
Uh, well, I'm kind of like what Belinda said, that, you know, data and uh information can be twisted in many, many ways. I I really don't see how a mask interferes with a child's learning when they're in person with their teacher. I I I can't buy that, uh because again, I think they're making eye contact, they're talking through their mask like we've been doing for months. And uh I think the fact that a child and the teacher's relationship for safety reasons across the community, um I think the mask is important. I just heard today, for example, the governor of Pennsylvania, by the end of the month, has taken away all of the COVID things, except for the mask. And the mask isn't coming off as a requirement until they have herd immunity of seventy percent in Pennsylvania. So I think that's a pretty smart decision for that person, um and it speaks volumes in my eyes. Uh, siding with Jen, I think that um for this school year, we need to finish it out the way it is. Uh, next year, we can be open and look at different things. Uh, but I don't really believe that a mask is a huge difference with regards to relationships in the classroom, other than when it was before uh the shots, definitely not. Now, with the shots and where it might go from here, because they're talking about boosters and everything else, um it's it's gonna be hard to predict.
I don't know that there's so much to relationships necessarily sometimes too, I think it's it's the distraction of the mask, I think it's when it's extremely hot, the kids are thinking more about the mask on their face than potentially what their teachers are saying or what kind of things are going on in the classroom, I think it's more than the relationship, but again, I think that's fair to say, we could, I would hope we could get to a point where we could allow that option. Like you said, when you get rid of the shields, you gave the option, if you still want to have your child in a shield, use the shield, it won't say stop anybody from doing anything.
I I think this is an issue that you're never gonna get a hundred percent agreement, right, you're never gonna get, it's a very divided issue, it's been a very divided issue from day one. Um, you know, we've been going out to restaurants and sit down at a restaurant since it started, and I know I have people that I work with that have not been to a restaurant in over a year, so I'm not saying they're wrong, I don't think, they're saying I'm wrong, it's it's two perspectives, right, and I think that's the big challenge, is that it's a wide. Um, yeah, they're, it's just so divided sometimes, so I think we make the best decisions we can, try to get everybody where they're comfortable and get together, not we, there's options to make people comfortable, right?
And I agree, I mean, I've been to Florida twice in the last three weeks with tens of thousands of cheerleaders and screaming mothers in competitions at ESPN, and I was at Epcot and on an airplane twice in the last three weeks, I mean, it's, I mean, my God, you're sitting six inches from a stranger.
Right.
On an airplane, right, my choice, right, I could have driven, I didn't, it'd be terrible. Um, so, does anyone have questions for Mr. Graham specifically as far as the health department or data or anything like that, or anything that you're looking for him to provide to us today? Or any others?
I guess what I what I can provide to the board is we we've been, like Mr. Graham said, we're meeting with our superintendent counterparts in Lake County and Geogga County and um also with the Geogga County Health Director, also Mr. Graham from Lake County. And um every every week, we, they they give us updates, they answer questions that we might have as we're preparing for next year, I can update the board as much as I possibly can when things start to change. And then when we have to get down to the mid-range in terms of making decisions for next year, obviously the board will be part of that process.
Do you have any questions, Mr. Graham, too, so a couple of weeks ago, I know you had a phone call with the focus group from Riverside Parents, I'd actually helped um get probably ten of those parents on that call, and they were, I know anywhere from parents of parents to parents with kids in kindergarten. What kind of input did you get from families with kids in the district currently as far as what their stance was on how things are going in the classrooms and all that?
I'm sorry, I know we had about twelve different parents on there, most of them were at that group, was letting, wanted to see masks removed. There's a couple of them that did say they would like to see it as optional, and so, again, this is some of, we're just trying to advance the policy, advance those discussions. Uh, so it's early on, we still could do a focus group with the superintendents, we kind of do that officially every week. Uh, we did those parents, but you already have the parent, so if there's no masks at school next year, you might want to keep your child home. Again, we're just balancing this, like, we're going to lose kids in the classroom, which, again, our board is very felt, feels very strongly that in-person learning is the best. The question is, is that going to be with a mask, not with a mask, optional, three feet, six feet, six inches? Those, we're trying to go through that discussion, hear all the comments that we have from the individuals, look at the data, and we know. And we could wait till August, right, but, you know, ounce of prevention, pound of uh cure, right, something like that. Uh, we want to try to get as much information that we can so parents can make a decision now, not in two weeks in August. And and then again, it's just, it's very challenging to do that, so we're gonna continue with the focus groups, and we're gonna bring in some others next week. Uh, if we have another meeting, we'll have the board meeting, it may or may not be solved, it's not, again, we'll keep working with our Board of Health and the state and all the partners. But again, we're trying to get a little bit tighter recommendation out to you guys so that the parents can really make an informed decision on what that is. Because, yeah.
Mr. Graham, could you talk a little bit about your board and how 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 it's it's, you know, banned, if you will?
Yeah, so we're one of the largest boards of health in the state, primarily being how we uh combined in nineteen eighty-six. But we have fourteen members, each of those are appointed from, uh one individual from each city, two from the city of Mentor, as the largest populous city. Uh, and then three from the townships and villages, work through what's they call it District Advisory Council, they dominate three, sit in that board. Uh, then they really just decide a high-level policy, you know, we're gonna accept this money, we're gonna do an obesity program, we do the technical side and package everything together. So they're really the board, we, so I report to the Board of Health, uh when I'm not Health Commissioner, I'm the Secretary of the Board of Health. Uh, it's the language, you know, or a hard revised code, very prestigious position, the Secretary. Uh, we also have a medical director that's hired, uh he's an infectious disease specialist, Dr. Sachin Patel with uh uh infectious disease associates uh down in the Akron area around there, and uh, so we have this whole team to lean on and his is, and again, he tries the best so we have his whole team to lean on, and his, and again, he tries the best, the best he can to help us, he's been very open-minded, we've worked through a lot of things that were very functional things, like, this is a little overkill, this is not what we need, could not ask for a better physician to be open-minded, and not just closing the door at every, every, at every stop, so, he's been very, very good, so, he weighs in, and again, we wanted to start getting some of the school input, some of the parent input, the community input, and again, we were getting more and more inquiries about, would get the masks go? We told the governor that, the governor said we could get a mask once we got vaccinated, people got vaccinated, and now the masks are here, and we joke about moving the finish line, moving the goalpost, and honestly, some of that's happened, you know, I was very upset when they could not do X, Y, Z, but you could open the fair and have three thousand people at the stands, and everybody else could have like five. Risk is risk, you know, and so, that really started us kind of looking down with the county commissioners or Board of Health, how do we work together to come up with the best for Lake County and local control? We were probably one of the first counties that really pushed that limit a little bit to make the best decisions we could, by having them to have been in a rocks concert a little bit longer than would have been intended by the by the governor. As we remove those opportunities and we made those access opportunities harder, can't prove it, there's a lot more things going on in people's yards and the neighbors down in the basement with their kids, and by restricting all those opportunities, I can't prove it, but those numbers went up as part of a response to that, a lot of frustration, and now we have mask fatigue, you know, COVID fatigue, twelve, sixteen months, those are real things, and we have to to kind of put that into the equation, and no matter what we did, we would be on, in the schools, I can comment, congratulate Jim and the board, you guys are doing a stellar job of contact tracing, in fact, the schools are doing a better job than us because they knew the families, they knew the classroom seating, they could make judgment calls, so Mohammed and Tanya, maybe you know from the Figure Out faculty, did a great job of really cutting through that, seeing what the the real risk was, advising you guys accordingly. So, so if we are doing something different in fall, which I I hope we are, you guys are really going to be working with us hand by hand to see is there anything negative coming out of those decisions that we made, be it suicides, something because of a mask or because of not wearing a mask, we're going to be on top of that as much as we can be in fall as well, so, and I I think that's one part, that changes have consequences, and you change those variables or vulnerable variables, we have to be on that assessment side, monitoring that, the surveillance side of it, and so, if anything, it does start going left and center, we catch it as early as we can and prevent that.
Is there anything else that you wanted to discuss further with that, Mr. Graham?
No, I just, I just admit the, you know, the the observation that that it sounds like there's a terrific board in support within the within the the Health Department in Lake County, and that that's critical, I I think that that we have a staff and and people who are, you know, trying to to balance things out. I guess that the one observation I would make is that the that board is is all appointed, and and because they're, you know, as has been pointed out, they're, you know, you can't find your your expert of choice, I guess. I I did choose this because it is the University of Minnesota, and and I don't know if they have any bias or not, but but the the bottom line is, as as we move forward, I think it'd be great if if elected boards had more more say in how, you know, in in what happened with with regard to to that. We do have some, I get latitude, but it'd be great if the if, you know, perhaps the the Health Board recognized that as well, so I'd just say that.
Well, I think it's a good jumping off point, just to at least kind of know where everyone stands, and to get some good input from Mr. Graham, and just know that these need to be the conversations that we're having at every board meeting going forward, you know, where we see August and how we can let our families know is, you know, obviously, we can't make a decision today because we don't have that kind of guidance yet, but that in all fairness to our families, too, so they know how to prepare for the fall, we need to keep having these conversations so that we can let everyone feel comfortable with what's going to happen in the classroom.
Yeah, I just, I just admit the the observation, and again, I, you know, I think Mrs. Krasinski brought up the, you know, you know, the the obvious point, but it needed to be stated, is that, you know, no matter what we do, not everybody's going to be happy.
No, not now.
And and I think if if we look at those two questions of, you know, did did masks, are they detrimental? I I would happen to disagree with Mr. Miley, I think they they were, and and the other the other question is that, where, you know, can we ever get to zero risk? And the answer is no. So, how do we, how do we thread that needle, that the space between those two questions, and and balance the risk, and maximize the the educational capability of the of the district, and the the great teachers and staff and other people that we have in place? How do we, how do we raise that dynamic up so that we're better next year than we are this year? So, I mean, that's really, to me, what what being on the school board is about, is trying to create as much opportunity as possible, the last, you know, eighteen months have been challenging, but that's going forward, that's, to me, what we've got to try to figure out.
Agreed. Yep. Dr. Kales, do you have anything further?
Uh-uh.
Okay. I think we can, we don't need to worry about official action at this meeting, so we can just skip through that.
Yep.
With that, our next meeting will be our finance and audit and personnel on May twentieth at eight AM, and our business meeting on May twenty-fifth at seven. If we don't have anything, I'll make a motion to adjourn at six fifty-eight PM, if someone wants a second.
You you don't have to take the action to remove that from the agenda, right?
No.
Okay, someone want a second?
A second.
Thank you, Mr. Krasinski, go ahead, color roll.
Senator Hart.
Aye.
Tom Max.
Aye.
Louis Misty.
Aye.
Jack Miley.
Aye.
Motion carried. Thank you all very much. Good luck.